This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council Wednesday, February 14th. Please stand for our invocation led by Councilman William Carroll and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Almost aggressively have with Father, we're gathered here today in this auditorium, and we thank you for the opportunity of being here. We thank you for the ability to be here another day, to have made it through this week and this weekend and this last month. We thank you for the camaraderie and friendship, and we thank you for the ability to find consensus within all of us. We thank you for this day, and may we pray that we all make it through the next. God bless everyone, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the light of liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, President Small.
Here.
Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Also, Member Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll. Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Woods.
Here.
Statement of rules.
And good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
It's good to see everybody this Wednesday morning. Welcome to our February 14th meeting, and to all the ladies, Happy Valentine's Day to each and every one of you all. Again, this is our weekly meeting. At this meeting, we do have rules. At this time, I ask if anyone have any type of electronic device at this time, please at this time put it on the off of the vibrator position, the off of the vibrator position. Any person that is designed to address the council must sign in indicating the ordinance, the resolution, public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must give his or her name. When addressing the council, the speaker must give his or her name. Any person that is designed to clerk office to speak on another agenda item would not be allowed to do so. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the council. A bell will sound to indicate the end of two minutes. One minute remain for summarizing. Second bell indicates that your time has expired. When addressing the council, there to be no personal address to any individual council members. All statements are to be made to the chair who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, there would be no undue applause and or public outcry allowed. Madam Clerk?
Communications for Mayor Stimson.
Good morning. It's good to see everyone. Y'all must be the remnant that survived Mardi Gras. So, you, the strong survive. Thank y'all for being here. Yeah. So, anyway, I have just a couple of announcements this morning, but speaking of Mardi Gras, you know, it's, it's just amazes me year after year what the city employees do to coordinate one of the biggest street parties that exists and for it to come off as it does. We had over 1.1 million visitors during the period of Mardi Gras parades. Mardi Gras Day, excuse me, Tuesday was the largest day where we estimated we had 200 and almost 205,000 people there. And this year, we had some challenges that we had not had in the past, specifically having to do with parking and the unknowns regarding parking. And I want to really compliment our communications team of all they did, as well as the citizens that took advantage of the messaging that we were putting out on an ongoing basis, trying to make sure that people had a great experience. As I think about watching the parades go by and think about all that the police do in preparation, I hope that you stand kind of as I do in awe of everything they do. Some of the interaction that you see the policeman engaging with the children and just the crowds, and you know that by Tuesday, these guys and gals, they're really tired of all that interaction, but they do a phenomenal job. And seeing our guys and gals on bicycles or fire rescue, just to be there in case anything happens to anyone, we're very, very fortunate. You know, the, kind of the real show after the show is the Public Works Department, and they take a tremendous amount of pride in what they do in trying to clean up. There's 100, I think there are 160 of them that engage in trying to clean up the, after the parades. And this morning, I don't know, Shonda, what time they showed up, starting to take up barricades, probably at 6 o'clock this morning, and probably didn't get home to 10, 11 o'clock last night, 12 o'clock last night. My point in saying all that is, is that so often you, you may not have the opportunity to engage and so know who some of the Public Works guys are. You do see our policemen, you do see the firemen. Please, please, give them a huge pat on the back and tell them thank you for all that they do, because if it was not what they're doing and the leadership involved with those organizations, Mardi Gras would not be nearly as successful as it is. So, thanks, and hope all of the, those in leadership in those department will make sure that all those in the departments doing all the hard work know that the city council, as well as the mayor, we sincerely appreciate all of that, all that they do. At this time, I'd like to call on Shonda Smith to introduce the Public Works Employee of the Month. Good morning.
Good morning. This year, we are making a slight change to how we've done in the past for our Public Works Employee of the Month. Previously, we did three. There was a Public Works at Large, Parks and Rec, and then there was Public Services. This year, what we're doing is doing one whole one for Public Works as a whole and revamping the process a little bit. So, our first person who got that in January was Sherri Boucher, and then our second one, I'm gonna have Jen Green come and announce who that person is.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you, Shonda. Today, I'm representing Programs on Public Project Management, and I have Cody Reed with me. Cody is a civil engineer in my department, and he came to the city of June of 2020, kind of a difficult time. We were in the middle of COVID. He came with an impressive background in the private sector and working with other municipalities, and it has been a true pleasure working with him as part of the Public Works team. He was initially hired to take on the Broad Street Redevelopment project, which is one of the city's most complex and difficult projects that has ever been done in the city with engineering. He's been a great asset both in the office and in the field, forging strong relationships with city staff, consultants, and contractors. He always keeps the city and its citizens in the forefront of his mind when working on projects, which is so important. To me, the best leaders are those that lift others up and are always ready to help others. I'd just like to share a few things that his colleagues have to say about him. Cody is dependable and always willing to lead his technical expertise. His experience and knowledge is just a small contribution to what makes him an asset to programs and project management in the city of Mobile. As a young professional in the project management field, what I enjoy most about working with Cody is his willingness to share his wealth of knowledge in, in the industry. Being approachable is huge. Cody is patient, answering questions from non-engineers, shares his experiences on assigned project, and is willing to provide assistance and perspectives on other projects. Cody is a true team player. With that, I'd like to congratulate Cody. It's a well-deserved honor. Congratulations.
Hey, good morning. I just want to say it's definitely an honor. This is something I didn't expect, but I truly do appreciate it, and to everybody that recommended me, and especially to my supervisor, Ms. Jennifer Green, for the motivation to get out there and get things done. So, thank you.
Congratulations to you.
With us this morning, we have some ladies representing the Mobile, the Greater Mobile Chapter of the Links Incorporated. We also have the American Heart Association Director of Health Strategies, Evan Duffy. So, I'd ask the President Sylvia Bettis, the Vice President Jacita Green, and Aquiline Kennedy to please approach the podium, and then I will read the proclamation. And the proclamation reads, whereas more than 350,000 people experience cardiac arrest outside of a hospital each year, and only about one in 10 survive, and whereas CPR, especially if performed immediately, can double or triple a person's chance of survival, and whereas knowing how to properly perform CPR has encouraged more people to act when faced with a cardiac emergency, and whereas the American Heart Association has set a goal of doubling the survival from cardiac arrest by 2030 by turning bystanders into lifesavers, so that everyone, everywhere, is prepared and empowered to become a vital link in the chain of survival and provide CPR in response to a cardiac emergency. And whereas in celebration of American Heart Month and the American Heart Association's 100th birthday, we urge every household to join the Nation of Lifesavers and learn CPR. Now, therefore, I, William S. Stimson, the 108th Mayor of the City of Mobile, in recognition of the importance of the ongoing fight against heart disease and stroke, and the effort to double the survival rate from cardiac arrest, do hereby officially proclaim February 2024 as American Heart Month in the City of Mobile. Thank you so much for what you do, and congratulations.
To President Small and the City Council, and to our mayor, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Sylvia Bettis, and I am the President of the Greater Mobile, Alabama Chapter of the Links Incorporated. The Links Incorporated is an international not-for-profit organization established in 1946. It is one of the nation's oldest and largest volunteer service organizations of mission-focused women who are committed to enriching, sustaining, and ensuring the culture and economic survival of persons of African ancestry. As you are aware, African Americans are disproportionately affected by hypertension, obesity, and diabetes, conditions that increase the risk of heart disease and stroke. We aim to change that. Today establishes our new level of commitment with one of our health partners, the American Heart Association. Together with you, we are raising awareness of the importance of living healthier lives in this City of Mobile. Again, thank you to the City Council and to the mayor.
Good morning. My name is Evan Duffy. I'm the Community Impact Director for the American Heart Association here on the Gulf Coast. First of all, thank you for recognizing American Heart Month. It's important that we increase awareness of cardiovascular disease and stroke here in the city of Mobile, continues to be the leading cause of death in America and on the Gulf Coast. So, we are more encouraged than ever that we can help do something about that. We are entering our 100th year at the American Heart Association, our centennial year, and in this year, we are focused not just on our traditional pillars of science and education, but also on preparedness and addressing inequities in, in health access and nutrition security and access to resources for CPR training and preparedness. So, as we work through this centennial year, we continue to partner with community organizations here in the city to make sure that our folks are ready if the need arises to perform CPR on a neighbor or fellow church member or even a family member. So, once again, we thank you for allowing us to come today and for recognizing this month, and happy Heart Month, everyone.
I'm gonna ask to all the visitors, the, from the Heart Association and the Links, will y'all please stand and let us recognize you all for coming this morning? Thank y'all so much for y'all works.
And Mr. President.
And Ms. Gregory.
We can't let this moment pass us by without recognizing our Judge Shelby Hall. Yes, and then other, other city employees who are part of the group, Ray Richardson, of course, Shayla, you're part of this group as well. Yeah? Am I missing anybody? It might be. Personnel board, okay. Thank you so much for being here. Love the red. Thank you for being here and for helping to promote what we all need to do in order to be healthy and to prevent heart disease throughout, throughout the region, and especially women. Y'all know, of course, women are greatly impacted as well. So, thank you so much for what you do and for being here today.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Penn.
I want to join in with my colleagues. Thank you so much for the support and everything that you are doing for our community. One of the things that, when I first came on council, I had five F's that I wanted to work on, that's faith, fitness, finance, fun, and family. And fitness is a major part of our community. We have to know that if we want to be a healthy community, we have to know about CPR, we have to understand that we need to exercise, and all these things that you're speaking about is very vital for our community. So, whatever way that District One can do the support, let me know, because I want to be a part of that. Thank you.
Okay, so I have one more proclamation, and there's some individuals that are with the Mobile County Health Department, I believe, that are here, and I'm gonna call your name. And so, if you are here, you can approach the podium, Dr. Jennifer Young Pierce. Then we have, she is the Director of Cancer Control and Prevention, Janelle Lowman, Chelsea Morgan, Chelsea McCowen, Frederick Neubauer, who is a five-year survivor of the, of the cancer that I'm getting ready to read about, and then also Cindy Myers, who is a widow of the FBI Agent Brian Myers. Okay? So, this proclamation has to do with cholangiocarcinoma. Did I say that right? That is a long word, okay? And it's the day after Mardi Gras, too, okay? So, please, please bear with me on that, okay? Whereas USA Health Mitchell Cancer Institute, in partnership with the Cholangiocarcinoma Foundation, recognized World Cholangiocarcinoma Day in commemoration of all patients and caregivers impacted by this rare and lethal cancer. And whereas cholangiocarcinoma starts in the bile duct, which is a thin tube that reaches from the liver to the small intestine, and whereas the disease is a rare cancer with a five-year survival rate being approximately 20%, and whereas there's currently no cure for cholangiocarcinoma cancer, and whereas increased cholangiocarcinoma advocacy, awareness, research, and education will bring improved outcomes for the patients and early detection and treatment and potential curative measures, now therefore, I, William S. Stimson, the 108th Mayor of the City of Mobile, do hereby officially recognize February 15th, 2024, as World Cholangiocarcinoma Day in the City of Mobile. Thank you for what you do.
First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor and the council members for proclaiming February Cholangiocarcinoma Month. I am a, starting my fifth year of, for lack of a better term, remission. It's a, it's a cancer that you're typically diagnosed at stage four, which means it's spread to your body. It is technically incurable at that moment, but there's so much advances being accomplished now. Treatment being provided at Mitchell Cancer Center. I'm also treated at MD Anderson. There are only 10,000, less than 10,000 people a year diagnosed with this cancer in the United States. It's extremely, extremely rare, and this means a lot to the Cholangiocarcinoma Foundation that, that you've done this, and we will broadcast this across the country. Want to thank you again, and we keep kicking the cancer can down the road, and I plan to be around here for a long time. Thank you.
Good luck to you, and God bless you.
I would like to thank Carrie McNair at University of South Alabama Mitchell Cancer Center for doing all the processing to, to get this accomplished. Thanks.
Certainly, thank you. Mr. President, that concludes my remarks.
All right, thank you, and congratulations to you. Keep fighting. Madam Clerk?
Adoption of the agenda.
Second?
We're promptly moving to second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda's adopted.
Appeals, we have requests for a wave of the noise ordinance on February 17th on Sheeranham Drive, March 23rd in Mardi Gras Park, March 30th on Airport Boulevard, May 8th in Arlington Park, May 25th in Meadowlawn Park.
So, move.
Second?
We're promptly moving to second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Appeal passes. Just one second, Madam Clerk. Thank y'all ladies again. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Public hearings, today is a public hearing to consider modification of a previously approved planned unit development for property located at 5041 Range Line Crossing Drive.
This open up the public hearing for this particular said item. Is anyone present that would like to address the council, so you may come down to the podium by stating your name. Is anyone present?
Good morning. I'm Melissa Hadley with Goodwin Mills and Kaywood. I'm here as the applicant, and I'm available for any questions or any additional information that may be required by the council.
Questions are coming from this council. Thank you so much for coming down. Is anyone else present? If not, this public hearing is closed.
Public hearing to consider modification of a previously approved planned unit development for property located at 3220 Airport Boulevard.
Now, this open the public hearing for this particular said item, is anyone present that would like to address the council, and so you may come down to the podium by stating your name. If not, this particular public hearing is closed.
Public hearing to consider the application of Roosevelt Robertson to operate a shuttle service.
This open up the public hearing for this particular said item, is anyone present that would like to address the council? If not, this particular public hearing is closed.
Public hearing to consider the application of Mountain Taxi LLC doing business as Sunset Taxi to operate a taxi service.
This open to the public hearing for this particular said item, is anyone present that would like to address the council, and so you may come down to the podium by stating your name? This open up the public hearing for the application of Mountain Taxi LLC. If not, this particular public hearing is closed. Hold on one minute, Madam Clerk. What are you, here, you're here for a particular item? Okay, all right. All right, Madam Clerk.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, David Whitlock.
I'm David. Good morning. Happy Valentine's Day to all the ladies.
Is your full name?
David Whitlock. This is a problem I'm gonna talk about. It's nothing new in the city, but it's concerning to me, and it should be concerning to every citizen, that sex trafficking, I believe, is happening right under our noses in the city. If we look at the hotels on the Belt Line and I-65, right now, you can, I'm gonna just, there's a number of these escort sites, but I'm gonna hit, it's called skipthegames.com. You can type in the city you're looking for, and right now, on page one, as you count down, 29 women list their location is the Belt Line, Mobile, these hotels on the Belt Line. Now, my concern would be, how many of these women that are not doing it for their free will, that are being sex trafficked? And Mobile's an ideal, ideal location, easy access to 10 and 65. And also, what the other crime this may bring along, you know, prostitution brings along drugs, like some of the other crime it may bring along. And I don't know what the city could do about shutting down these escort sites. There's numerous others, and they, the primary locations are even in Tillman's Corner, you know, these hotels on Coca-Cola Road, and, but the primarily is the Belt Line.
Yeah, Mr. Dave.
Mr. Whitlock, thank you so much for coming down and expressing.
I would conclude my remarks.
Sir? Okay, thank you for coming down today. We have the Public Safety Director with us today. He's heard your remarks, and if you'd like to take it up with him later on.
Yes, Captain Lee is here to speak with you. We'll, we'll go outside real quick and speak to you also. Any information that you give, Captain Lee, I'll forward to my old friends at the Federal Bureau of Investigation.
Thank y'all. Y'all have a good day. Thank you, Mr. Whitlock.
Madam Clerk?
Najah Hill.
Good morning, City Council. Hello, I'm Najah Hill, founder of Mothers Involved Against Gun Violence. I came before you all in December, the last meeting of 2023, asking for your support in obtaining a location for mothers, families, and victims of gun violence. It's not about me, it's about being able to do something to stop gun violence. I'm here to clear any concerns or any questions about mothers involved against gun violence. Mothers Involved is a legal nonprofit 501(c)(3). Its name reservation is, was legally filed February 10th of 2023. Our rights are reserved to myself, Najah Hill. It was founded in memory of Chavanne Scruggs and all victims of gun violence. Chavanne was gunned down at the age of 16 on the side of the police station. In fact, the very side street where many of you, where many of you stood at the Leflore shooting. I heard Mayor Stimson state that day, that we have to do more. Churches, pastors, organizations, and I agree, it's gonna take every single one of us to curb this gun violence. Mothers Involved was the most active organization in the year of 2023. Every event we had at which children involved, families, mothers standing, pushing through trauma. These are proven facts. Our communities respond to people that have experienced life situations as they have, and it's one difference and a factor that is important. Let's support what we know and see with our eyes as being and is being done, done with results. I have partnered, partnered a network together that will help provide resources for at-risk youth, family, mothers in need, counseling mental health services, as well as utility assistance and food assistance. This location will help identify our community's needs. Funding will continue to educate, the education of, my three minutes left? Funding will help continue counseling for trauma victims, create more community events, promote items, promos to help curb gun violence, and give back to poverty families at Christmas. Let's build back our trust in our communities and help people who are really trying to help. If you would like to experience a part of what these mothers are standing here, mothers that care about their children's future, I encourage you to attend a trial of a mother who has lost their child. You are welcome to try, to attend my son's murder trial, that would be February the 26th. All you have to do is walk upstairs on the eighth floor, Brandon Hambright, 8100. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. Mr. President. Mr. Penn.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Ms. Hill, for coming down. Of course, I commend the service.
Yeah, thank you, um, Mr. President, and thank you, Ms. Hill, for coming down. Of course, I, I commend the service. I was at the last event. You, um, you did a network, uh, event at the Kiwanis Boys and Girls Club. And it was truly amazing because it, she brought different groups that throughout the city together to utilize their resources. And that's what it's about. We can't do this individually. Um, she is a, an organization, not just about herself, but she is about bringing people together. And so, um, I submitted, um, I received your letter. I submitted to that from my discretionary, I would be given, and you should be receiving the letter, um, for funds from District One, um, seat. But moving forward, I would like to encourage everybody, I agree, we have to work with organizations that are already doing things in our community. Ms. Hill has shown that, and she has been working with not just youth, but other organizations that are doing similar things. And that's been my whole point going forward. We have to work together to solve these issues. So I commend you and thank you so much, Ms. Hill.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hill.
Sabrina Mass.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Sabrina Mass. I pre-prepared this, but I appreciate you guys. I will speak somewhat differently in this three minutes as I address concerning issues before this body of citizens present in this room and those listening. You may think I speak of stupidity, but I speak out of humility to do what the God and Jesus I serve has bestowed on my heart to present. Nigel Hill, the mother in this very room has lost a child. As a mother, there could be no greater pain. I sit and listen to her cries and hurt, and never-ending tears flowing on the phone. Sometimes for minutes more than you could even know. And for her to feel the need to beg the very elected officials for help with her nonprofit is very tragic. As I have voiced many things in this city of Mobile, not one time have I ever asked any elected official for one copper penny to help me. I only ask for you to help the citizens. I keep hearing the noise about it takes a community. But yet, once again, standing here begging and pleading the city elect to help Nigel Hill with her true movement. God is no fool, neither am I. I will say this. I have sat on the phone day after day, hours after hours, speaking to this young lady. I am one of the blessed mothers that has not lost a child, but that doesn't mean that we as mothers don't feel the pain. I have cried with this young lady so many hours on the phone that it doesn't even make sense. I have had to hold this child up so that she wouldn't want to lay down with her son, saying she doesn't even want to be here. This stuff is tragic, and I don't even know the answer in human form, but I will say this, the God I serve and the God I know, he will bring peace.
Pastor Belina Green.
Pastor Belina Green, six oh three Delaware Street, the Downey Bay Community. Good morning, mayor and staff. Good morning, council and women in leadership that are represented here today. I come to you today with a message. Something I prayed about and I've watched. And God laid this on my heart. This is something I did, really didn't want to do, because I got a lot of work in my community. Right now, working on registering people to vote and working on absentee ballots. So, for the election coming next month, we're gonna talk to you today about Coach Ralph Gardner. I called Shadret Collins with Parks and Branch.
Hold, hold, stop a minute. You, you, I believe that you sounded up citizens' participation.
That's what it's about. Yes, that's what, that's what it is about.
Make sure you just stick to your subject.
Okay, I am. He's a servant. He's a servant in the Downey Bay Community. And as you know, he's coached many people in that Downey Bay community. Correct, Mr. Hill? Anyway, um, his servitude is what bring me before you today. And first, you have to understand what a servant is to understand the concept and the message that I bring before you today. He's served in his community and coached for fifty-nine years. He's paid for children to go to college. He's paid for, for books for children. He's paid power bills for mothers while he was coaching their children. Coach is eighty-some years old. He needs to be recognized. That's what a servant is. That's somebody that's participating in our community. And what we've got to learn to do is recognize servants. Now, I called to get some, something done with him with recognition. I called Shadret Collins, but he hadn't called me back. Uh, that was two weeks ago. Uh, Coach has been, been coaching fifty-nine years. He's at James Seals Rec. Um, he coached a disabled basketball team that traveled the country. He also was the scrimmage team for the Special Olympics team for basketball, and they played over in Pensacola. So they picked his disabled basketball team, and they were mostly, um, white. It was a melting pot, though, to scrimmage that disabled basketball team, to get them ready for Special Olympics. That says a lot, okay? And also, too, we're asking, and in my community down the bay, for some recognition for him. Whether it's a street, a bus, a building, I don't understand what the building was named after. But I'm asking for some recognition because he's up in his eighties, and I don't want him to go to his final resting place without being recognized by the city. Also, as well, um.
Thank you, uh, Pastor Green. I advise you to, uh, email your, um, the councilor or district to email them.
I have. I've got no representation with that.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Mr. President?
Uh, Mr. Carroll.
Uh, may I state that I've never received an email in reference to, uh, Ralph Gardner from, uh, Miss Bay, uh, Ms. Green? Uh, but let, let me also say this. Uh, Shonda, Shad, uh, I don't know if you guys know Mr. Gardner, who she's talking about. Mr. Gordon, that's correct. Ralph has probably been at Texas Street forty years. I mean, in, uh, ma'am, a- at some point, you know, I, I, it would probably be appropriate. You know, he, uh, to be honest, I can tell you the chair that he sits in and the four points, and the four little pins on the ground in the, in the tile floor in the gym that he's probably been sitting in the same spot now for about forty, forty-five years. Um, he was there when we were there growing up, along with Ms. Bush, Mickey Glavine, and all those others that probably served just as much time. Uh, but for those that don't know Mr. Gardner, Mr. Gardner was probably on the same level as, uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Gordon. Uh, somebody's got me saying Gordon today, but for those of you that don't know, uh, uh, Mr. Gordon, uh, he's probably at the same level uh, as, uh, Mayor, uh, Shepherd. Ma'am, I keep wanting to say Mayor now, but as Coach Shepherd and, uh, Jay Sean and all those guys that made our recreation department grow. Before those guys, there were no organized sports in, in city league. Those things didn't come about until they bought them about. The tennis league, that's no longer here, that was started by Coach Bivins, who, we need to get his plaque back up over at Lyons Park. He started the ci- the, the city league tennis program for minorities in our city. You know, Mickey Glavine, who started, uh, uh, minority football at Texas Street and Crawford Park and those places like that. There's so many that right, right now have passed on that go unrecognized. But for Mr. Gordon, for Ra- Gordon, for Ralph, that sits in that same spot, in that door, when you come into the left, that's been in that same spot for forty-five years, at some point, I agree, we, we may want to do something for him while he's still, while he's still here. Because he's recognized by quite a few of us. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Carroll. Um, Madam Clerk.
Patsy Alexander regarding sixty-one twenty.
Oh, praise God. Good morning, everyone. My name is Patsy Alexander. I live at sixty-seven twenty-one Candlelight Court. What I'm discussing today is the Community Development Block Grant. You know, I think you guys should know me by now. I was here last year, and you told Mr. Roberts to give me, to just take me on his arms and give me instructions because I completed a grant, but I checked off the wrong one. So that was last year. So this, when I came in last week, that was February sixth. I appreciate what you, you told Mr. Roberts to, that you want to see all the community development grants. I think that's very important that I've seen. I checked with, uh, he said there was two reasons why. Did you get my email? I, I CC a copy of what I said, Mr. Roberts? I sent a, I wrote him a, uh, email and I CC copies to all the city councilman people. But what happened right now, he said, two reasons why this community development grant was not approved was because, the first reason, the environmental review. I checked with, uh, Mr. Chuck Meltone, the field environmental officer from HUD. So I'm waiting, he's the regional office communicator. So I'm waiting to get a communication, a written documentation, so I'm not gonna tell you what he said. So I think I have to put everything in writing. I realized that. And also, he said the second reason was because of the, um, it wasn't zoned for that. I'm going upstairs when I leave here and get the, they have a big book there, so I know what's in there, because I looked at that book. But I ain't gonna bring that, tell you the truth about that either. So I'm gonna, when I see you guys next week, I'm gonna have a lot of information, I hope. Also, I want to, I thank Mr. Ricardo Woods. I appreciate you calling me the same day you, uh, that was February sixth, and I was surprised to get a call so fast. Thank you very much. I did try to call you maybe about three times or four times since then, okay? So I just want you to take in consideration, even though Mr. Roberts said that it was re- it was not approved, I'm not gonna give up. I'm not gonna wait till another year. I've been waiting for years to get this building off the ground, helping not only women that are on halls, but also to helping mothers, like the Mrs., the lady who just got through talking, Nigel Hall, and also the young man who was saying about the, uh, the prostitution that's going on. How they transitioning this community with, communicating with all, working with all these organizations. It's a community thing. Not only, we work the Salvation Army, Penelope House. I, I know my time is up, but I'm not giving up. I just appreciate what you have done and what you're going to do for Holiday Transition Center. So God bless you, and I see you guys next week, okay?
Mr. Carroll.
Any questions? I'm sorry, any questions?
You were gonna say something. No, no, go ahead, Ms. Carroll.
Um, I, I got to make one recommendation to you. Um, I was given the opportunity to read your application. Um, I want you to get somebody to help you with the application process.
I will.
That, I think, just that in itself is going to help you get through the process a whole lot better. There was a lot of missing information, and there was a lot of things that couldn't be deemed accurate now. So get somebody to help you with the application process. That's one. Two, the money for the, the money for the.
Lighted community?
Yeah, right now, the money from CDPG Jamie was a hundred percent correct. You now cannot apply for restoration money based on the way the law is set up. So you're gonna have to find a different way to go through that. So keep, continue to come down, asking for those funds isn't gonna get us any closer. But there's other, other funds that you can qualify for for this facility. However, you have some hurdles that you have to jump through with urban development and every, everyone else. And I suggest that you start meeting with, uh, Sheila B. Cove and everyone else that does, uh, urban planning and zoning and all those things. So you need to get those hurdles corrected, because they're gonna have community, maybe some community clawback for types of facilities and things like that you're gonna have to satisfy. So, you know, you need to get someone to help you a little bit.
Thank you. And also, I'm meeting with Mr. Roberts February twentieth, so I hope he can give me, got me through, uh, this application. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carroll. Madam Clerk.
Reggie Hill regarding forty-one twenty-eight, twenty-one zero seventy-five, sixty-one twenty, and one twenty-one, and zero eight one five six.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Before we begin, um, I want to express that I agree with the sentiments shared by my neighbors from District Two. Um, today regarding Mr. Gordon, I've known him and his wife, uh, since the Texas Street Recreation Days, uh, when I was in middle school at Callaway Smith. Um, so that is something that we need to do, and I hope we will find some means to recognizing him. Uh, to the citizens and stakeholders of Mobile, greetings. Reggie Hill, uh, is my name. Coining a phrase from eighteen eighty-four, I rise today without malice to continue a conversation about potential action items used on an agenda which impacts the quality of life for all Mobileans. Now, let's begin with forty, um, that's one twenty-eight. These demolitions of structures, um, we all know we're in a housing crisis. Uh, it's been addressed the past couple of weeks that we need to look at how we can attack this a little better. Um, I have not heard anything, and I may be off the cuff here, but I have not heard anything regarding what we're gonna do with the remaining ARP resources. Uh, we flirted with this idea. We said that something is in the works, but nothing has been presented. Maybe it's been presented to you all and not the public, so we can have an update on what's going on with that, because we know that's nearly twenty-nine million dollars. Uh, it'd be great to know. Uh, we also understand that, uh, there are some pending legal matters with these housing matters, and this will be better interest, this would be in better interest of the city. Uh, we have some clarity on this. Well, let's look at twenty-one, um, that's zero seven five. Uh, this is basically the mishandling of the civic center. While I and the, uh, common cowboys have expressed our disdain for the parking inconvenience caused by such ill-mannered actions, the main concern is still, where do we go from here? Um, we understand that something is gonna be coming in March, uh, but I believe we've already seen how we've wasted nearly fifty million dollars, uh, on parts of the facility, or the property, rather, that really have not been, um, any convenience or benefit to the city. If the proposal does not reflect what we actually do on the inside, it should not be considered. I was looking at sixty, that's one twenty, and sixty, that's one twenty-one, please. Um, a couple of weeks ago, we requested for an investigation, uh, regarding these CDPG home ESG funds. Uh, there were remarks made this morning. I'm not sure if there was any clarity on this, uh, from Mr. Carroll, uh, regarding improper budgeting, um, or some inability to find resources. I'm not sure what's going on with that either. And we also know how alarming it is to see the Boys and Girls Club added as a potential service provider when there are entities that should actually be considered. Excuse me. It was actually mentioned about qualified entities as well and what it takes to get to qualification. But if we have entities that are actually meeting those marks, it's still not being considered, what is actually being done to ensure that this doesn't happen in the future? Um, last, it is zero eight, that's one five six. We don't really have the time to go into it in detail, but this is the fifty-four thousand dollars for, uh, renewal of police software. Um, and we discussed these surveillance metrics before, and there was not a single response on that. So I'm hoping that we can have some type of information regarding how we're gonna do this. We really want to improve public safety here in the city of Mobile. Thank you for your on the floor.
Ordinance held over sixty-four zero eleven, consider approval of a conditional use permit to allow a home-based daycare for property located at ten sixteen Belvedere Circle East. Sixty-four zero fourteen, consider modification of a previously approved plan and approval for property located at thirty-six fifty, thirty-seven oh four, thirty-seven oh eight, and thirty-seven fifty-eight Spring Hill Avenue. Sixty-four zero fifteen, consider modification of a previously approved, approved planned unit development for property located at thirty-six fifty, thirty-seven oh four, thirty-seven oh eight, and thirty-seven fifty-eight Spring Hill Avenue.
So move.
Second?
We're promptly moving second in any discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Consent resolutions held over thirty-seven zero eighty-five, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a retail beer, table wine, off-premise is only licensed to Dolphin Sito on Dolphin Island Parkway.
So move.
Second?
We're promptly moving second in any discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Forty-one twenty-eight, declare the structure at six oh five Gill Street a public nuisance and order it jumped, demolished, or secured.
Most of the table.
We're promptly moving second in any discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't table.
Resolutions held over twenty-one zero seven five, authorize contract with Keaton Construction due visits in Southern Preservation Systems for emergency repair and remediation. Authorized contract with Kedum Construction due visits in Southern Preservation Systems for emergency repair and remediation of brick wall at Civic Center.
So moved.
Second.
They're promptly moving second and in discussion.
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
I'm Mr. Reynolds.
We've got a lot of discussion over this particular item, and Councilmember Dave's last week raised some questions about, you know, revenue projections. What do we think there, we're going to earn in net income between now and, say, we make the decision on what we're going to do at the Civic Center site? And we, we got those projections back from ASM, and their dates they have booked include folks like distinguished young women and many of our various dance academies that are around the city. And we had ASM look into other facilities such as the Sanger Theater, the Convention Center, and any other, you know, facility we have out there that could accommodate these events. And there are conflicting dates, and they can't accommodate them anywhere else. So what we're faced with here is an emergency situation where we have to do something. We're aware this hazard is there at the Civic Center or at the theater. And we have revenue that will be generated over the next, say, six months to offset, or five months to offset these costs associated with this. And, you know, if it's going to be just sort of a net wash for the taxpayer here, and I think it's best that we try to accommodate all these events that have been scheduled, you know, some of them a year out or so, and instead of putting them in an adverse situation where they have no ability to find another place to host these, you know, major events for them, you know, for children and that sort of thing. So I'm going to support this, this item, and I encourage my colleagues to do the same.
Mr. President.
Hi, Mr. Penn.
I want to join in. I agree with my colleague, but one of the things that was a major point of making a decision was the economic impact. I think it's very vital when we move forward as a city, that when we look at things like the bowl games, the events that we have that come to our city, that creates an economic impact for our community and our city, it's very vital to continue those activities, like the bowl games, like the events. And so for me to hear those economic impacts that potentially would manifest with these events, I want to make sure that we will continue that. And of course, knowing that, like my colleague stated, that would be a net watch towards the taxpayers, I think is very vital. So I'll be supporting as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Hi, Mr. Woods. I'm not, I'm no on this. I think it's known that I'm no. My disagreement comes with the fact that there's, we're given this solution. Other solutions have talked and talked about, but we still continuously focus on just this one solution. We're also going on the, I guess, the belief that should we do anything but this solution, no one could use the theater. In fact, the matter is, is that we don't, I mean, the biggest issue, we don't know. So I'm a no on this. Again, I know we're going to find out more regarding the Civic Center in March. But I don't see spending over a quarter million dollars on a, on a building. And as my colleague has previously said, it's an old shoe.
All right, anyone else?
Mr. President.
Mr. Carroll.
I'm going to abstain on, abstain on this also. I can't see us spending $300,000 on this when there's other solutions that are, are just as valuable for fear of, of what we've heard. Also, I have a hard tongue swallowing the fact that we're going to spend $286,000 on an issue where there are places in this community that could use that money extremely, I mean, in extreme. I have a problem when I hear somebody say that there's a problem, or I'm concerned about supporting residential revitalization, the neighborhood revitalization with our, with council district funds. I get concerned with that, but I, I mean, I'm shocked that we want to spend $286,000 on a building that we don't even know what we're going to do with yet. But you have a problem when other people want to doggone improve the district. I do. I don't see it. I really don't. I think there are so many other things that we can be doing right now, but there are also better ways to approach this problem right now too than spending $286,000. So I'm going to abstain on this one.
Mr. President.
Mr. Reynolds, Mr. Dave, and Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I think, you know, I think we all start from the position of being reluctant to spend $287,000 on this building that's very, very old. We all start from there. The fact of the matter is that we have a report from a structural engineer that says that the item before us is, is the way to fix this so that if we continue to use the building, it doesn't imperil the people that are inside the building. There's been some other solutions offered, but there's, we, we're not aware. The structural engineer we have engaged does not recommend those solutions, is not willing to endorse them. So we're left with this, we're left in this position that if we are going to continue to utilize the facility, in my mind, we've got to adopt this solution that's in front of us. That's the only one that's endorsed by the structural engineer. Now, we've gotten information, that we've gotten information that the net revenue over the next six months will be sufficient, more or less, to cover these, cover these, these repairs. And we've also heard from people who know that there are not really alternative venues for most of these events that are scheduled in the theater over the next six months. So I, in my mind, you know, we have two very unattractive options before us. But in my mind, the least unattractive of these options is to go ahead and spend the $287,000 and fix it, let these events occur. Be something of a wash in terms of the money, but we're not kicking the events. We're not kicking them off these events, and the people who are going to attend them onto the street. And as Councilman Penn points out, in addition to all of that, you have the economic impact of these events. Plus, we don't want to get into the position where people whom we have told can have their event in the theater, that they can't have it at the last minute. So I'm in favor of it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Reynolds.
This venue is in fact a worn-out shoe. I don't pull back from that. It's certainly worn out. And these are just evidence, this is just evidence of it being, you know, completely worn out. And I think, you know, once these repairs are made, it's still going to be an old, worn-out building. If you put the alternatives, as Mr. Dave said, against each other, this is the best alternative. I mean, otherwise, I mean, we could risk on some, you know, harebrained idea that engineer's not going to sign off on, and we don't eliminate our, you know, sort of legal hazard with all of that. Or we could just shut it down altogether, shut the Civic Center down, which is, you know, not a terrible option, but it does leave these organizations with no place to operate. We're not going to get the revenue that's projected either, this 316 or so thousand dollars that's projected over the next six months. So that, that money that could, you know, be used otherwise wouldn't be used. So I, I think this is the best option we have, and, you know, I look forward to make, getting, hearing about the plans for this site altogether. The sooner we can make these tough decisions we have to make, the better off we're all going to be.
Mr. President.
May I remind the council and the audience that the overall facility at the Civic Center, including the theater, loses $2.5 million a year. So whatever money we make over there, it's still a loss overall. Even though you're saying that we're generally having an economic impact, that's great that we're having an economic impact on the city itself and the people that come downtown spend money. But let's not, let's not whitewash the fact that the building does lose $2.5 million a year. The other thing is, is that we were told of a structural engineer, what they said. I haven't seen one memo, one study, no calculations. I haven't seen anything that suggests anything what we were, other than what we were told, nothing other than that. So if there is a study out there that shows all the calculations that says this, then please produce it after this is over with. Because I don't remember the council getting it, even though the council keeps saying it's got it, but I didn't see it.
Anyone else?
Mr. President.
I'm Mr. Gregory.
I just want to join in to discuss what to do about the theater issue along with my colleagues. And as you've already heard, there are a number of events already booked through July. There is an expectation of 58,000 attendees, and that's not even counting. How many people are also going out for dinner, staying in hotels, buying gas, and that sort of thing? But the net revenue that is expected is around $316,000, which, as you have also heard, is basically a wash between how much it will cost to make repairs to the wall and the net revenue that is expected. If there was no wash to this, if it was just total, go out, let's, as we've heard, the, the old shoe, just, you know, make repairs to an old shoe, you don't get anywhere out of it, then, then yeah. If we were not able to make the repairs and continue holding these events that will bring in money, economic development, then it certainly would not be something that we would be in favor of. There are concerns about safety. We talked during some of our meetings about, well, let's just do something else that doesn't cost as much money. Let's put up fencing. Let's put up a wall. But yet, there are still safety concerns and legal issues that would be a part of that potential solution. We are only talking about the theater. We are not talking about the entire site. We are talking about only the theater in this instance, making some repairs so that these events can continue on, so that the ballet can still present their show, so the distinguished young women can come. And again, we're talking 58,000 attendees coming in for this, and we can't accommodate most of these anywhere else. So for now, on a temporary basis, at any rate, until we know what we're doing with the entire site, I think the best solution, the safest solution, will be to support this and make these repairs and let these events come into town as planned. And yes, I certainly agree with my other colleagues that we need to get this on the road. We get, we need to move as quickly as possible to make a decision on the entire site of the Civic Center and what its future will be. So for today, I support this as well.
I'd like to join in with my colleagues, some I do agree with and some I do not. And, you know, back before I got on council, even the Jones administration, we always heard about the condition of the Civic Center and how many millions of dollars it's losing every year. So we had already projected that, you know, we was going to lose some money with the Civic Center within this, with this current year. You know, and ever since this administration, the Stimson's administration, we, especially his first term, the Stimson's administration's first term, we always heard about that the Civic Center is closed, it's going to close, it's going to close, and two years, it's going to close next year. And now we're in 2024, and we still not closed yet, or it's still not shut down. And the thing about it is, we hear that something's coming up in March, but still not in agreement that the city council is going to agree what the administration is going to present to us, and could it be another year or two years? And that's, you know, if it's going to be another year or two years before we even start construction or either, you know, vote on a plan, then are we going to be losing some money between now and then with our fits and what we have today? And as you hear that, we already have events on the books. But we invite people to come to our city. We already have a whole bunch of construction going on from the Civic Center property all the way to in front of the Convention Center. And we're talking about putting some barricades and barricades and tapes up, and, you know, we are already in a mess. So I really believe that, you know, by voting for this today is a good thing for the city of Mobile. And I believe we need to go ahead and move this on. Another discussion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay. Abstain.
Item pass. Madam Clerk.
61-20, adopt the Community and Housing Development CDBG Home and ESG Action Plan, 2024-25 Action Plan.
So moved.
Second.
They're promptly moving second and in discussion.
Yeah, Mr. President, I had a chance to read about 12 contracts over the last week and from the 23, 24 CDBG plan. Looked at the dollars and cents and talked to them. I think it came up to maybe $500,000, $600,000. There's probably about a million plus in CDBG money, and all that money didn't go out the door to the actual plan itself. Some of it went to administrative costs. I was told that roughly 15 people within the administration worked the plan, which is about $30, $37,000 a piece over 15, if I did the math right, at $550,000, $600,000 in administrative costs per personnel. So I'm inclined to, to say yes to the CDBG outlet and move forward with the, the next year's allocations. But as spoken in the committee meeting, I would like to make sure that council has an opportunity to see these contracts and vote on them as they go out the door, so we know what we're actually looking at and not looking at them in hindsight a year later. So, so moved, Mr. President. That's my comment.
Another discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
61-21, adopt an additional public service provider to the CDBG 2024-25 Action Plan, Boys and Girls Club.
So moved.
Second.
They're promptly moving second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain? I don't pass.
03-135, appoint Richard Phipkins, George Hunter to the Industrial Development Board. 08-136, approve purchase order to Car Doctor for two utility vehicles. 08-137, approve purchase order to City Co., 430 heated banquet cabinets. 08-138, approve purchase order to Global Industries for six office cubicle workstations. 08-139, approve purchase order to Car Dex Rimstar for automated storage carousel. 08-140, approve purchase order to Time Clock Plus for annual renewal of hardware support and maintenance services for timekeeping equipment. 21-141, authorized contract with Chris Brewer Contracting for 2024 annual street maintenance. 21-142, authorized contract amendment with Moffett and Nickel for Cooper Riverside Park bulkhead replacement, design, closeout, and construction administration. 21-143, authorized contract with Motor Carrier Consultants for workplace drug and alcohol testing for city employees.
So moved.
Second.
They're promptly moving second and in discussion.
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Ms. Gregory.
On 21-141, that's the contract for street maintenance. This is something that the council has been working on with the administration for about a couple of years now. What it is will be being able to really rework potholes. Generally, what has happened in the past, you have a pothole, we come put asphalt in it, it lasts for a while when it rains, then the asphalt comes out. And we have a whole string of potholes on many, many streets. But what this does is, it requires us to come in and actually mill the street down to do like we do when we resurface a regular street. So this will take care of all of the potholes. It will cause a greater area of the street to be repaired and smoothed out, which will give the streets longer life, and we will get rid of a lot of those potholes that keep just plaguing the city. So I think this is a, a really good move on behalf of the administration to try to make these repairs and again, to give some of our streets a longer life until we can actually get to the point where we can resurface the entire street. So I'm, I'm happy to see this passing today, hopefully passing today.
Another discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Orders is being introduced, 64-016 through 64-017.
For council rules, this will lay over for one week.
Consent resolution is being introduced, 31-147 through 61-52.
Move to waive the rules for immediate consideration of these resolutions as read.
Second.
They're promptly moving second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clerk.
31-147, authorize the mayor to apply, accept, and receive a grant from the Gary S.
Sines?
Sines.
Sines.
I said it right the first time.
Gary Sines.
Sines Foundation, no local match. 37-148, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a retail beer table wine off-premises only license, liquor license for Super K on Airport Boulevard. 61-49, approve, award a special bonus to the Public Works Employee of the Month. 61-50, 151, and 152 are determining appropriation for, to the Mobile Area Martigro Association. 6150, 151 and 152 are determining appropriation for, to the Mobile Area Mardi Gras Association, Mobile Area Black Chamber of Commerce of Public Purpose and approving payment.
So moved.
Second.
They're proffered to move in second in discussion. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? I don't pass.
CIP resolutions being introduced, 21153.
Per council rules, this will lay over for one week.
Resolutions being introduced, 08154 through 37162.
Per council rules, these resolutions will also be laid over for one week.
Call for public hearings, 41163, call for public hearing to consider the application of Top Cat Limousine to operate a shuttle service scheduled February 27.
Moved. Second.
They're proffered to move in second in discussion. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Public hearing is called.
Announcements.
District One, Councilman Penn.
Thank you, Mr. President. This Saturday, we will have our parade in the Trinity Gardens community in District One, and we're inviting everyone to come out, come out and celebrate. Last year, I think we had over 40,000 people came out and celebrated in District One at one of the best parades, I believe, in the city of Mobile. So come out, have fun, be safe, and a lot of great things is going to happen. This month, we celebrate Black History Month. It's a time to dedicate, acknowledging and celebrating the rich heritage of African-Americans. Recently, on last week, I had an opportunity to take some visitors to visit the African Town Heritage House. It's an experience that left an impact on a lot of them. I would like to encourage everyone in the city of Mobile and outside the city of Mobile to take the opportunity to go visit this amazing museum, this amazing journey of history and understanding the challenges, as well as how a group of people made it and became successful here in our city and in, in this country. But it also talks about their experience.
Could you try again?
They're serious trying to answer. But it talks about their challenges. And I'm going to be honest, it was hard to hear at moments. It was hard for the visitors to hear. But we have to talk about those things. We have to deal with those emotions to understand and learn from our past. So I want to encourage you to go and visit. See, black history extends beyond the confines of a single month. It transcends to more than quotations. Rather than merely reciting an inspirational word, we should focus on taking more tangible Instead of just saying quotes of Dr. Martin Luther King, how about living it? How about now let's start seeing these things that we want to see in our community, which I believe we should do those things as well, but let's start seeing the action. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Penn. District Five, Councilman Dave.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to start off by, again, thanking the employees of our Public Safety and Public Works Departments for the absolutely extraordinary job they did this year and every year managing our Mardi Gras experience for all of our 200,000 citizens. It's just absolutely remarkable. We had, on the public safety side, we had two very unfortunate, we had several very unfortunate incidents during Mardi Gras, and the police were right on top of it immediately every single time. And then the work our public, Public Works people do in cleaning up is just unbelievable. We set the standard that, for parade cleanup, that, that everybody in the country wants to follow. As, as Councilman Penn pointed out, this is Black History Month, and I, you know, I've always considered myself something of a, a student of the American Revolution. But I had, until Councilman Fred Richardson told me about Crispus Attics, I had never heard of Crispus Attics. Crispus Attics, as you may know, was an American whaler, sailor, and stevedora of African and Native American descent, who's generally regarded as the first person killed in the Boston Massacre, and therefore, one of the first people killed in the American Revolution. It's an extraordinary individual, gave his life to ensure that freedom existed for everybody. It's important also, I want to read a statement that Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King made about Crispus Attics, because I think it's very important. King said, "He, Crispus Attics, is one of the most important figures in African-American history, not for what he did for his own race, but what he did for all oppressed people everywhere. He is a reminder that the African-American heritage is not only African, but American, and it is a heritage that begins with the beginning of America. Crispus Attics should never be forgotten." Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank you, Councilman Dave. District Six, Councilman Woods.
Yes, sir, I just want to take the time to say thank you as well to our public safety and also public service employees. Had the opportunity to, to bring the family down, attend some parades. One of the highlights of the, the whole carnival season for me was had the opportunity to stand next to a guy from Nebraska, and it was his first Mardi Gras parade, and so that, that's a highlight. But thank you again to, to all the city employees, and it was, they do a great job, and I really appreciate all their hard work. Thanks.
District Four, Councilman Reynolds. District Two, Councilman Carroll.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today is Valentine's Day, so let me wish you, all you ladies and staff members, Happy Valentine's Day. My wife and especially my two daughters, Happy Valentine's Day. I don't get a chance to, to see them as much as I used to every day, every night, but Happy Valentine's Day to the, to everyone and to the entire family in every point in the city. Again, Mardi Gras went off with a few incidents, some we just couldn't, all we couldn't directly control, but we have to do something about this gun violence thing. I think that since this open carry law has been out here, that things have gotten a little squirmy and squashy. People don't qualify with weapons, and weapons fall on the ground and accidentally go off and shoot people in the leg, and then we have people can't handle firearms and accidentally shooting people, and then other things that we just can't do. I think we're going to have to work really hard on this situation and how we handle things in the city of Mobile going forward with gun violence and actually possession of firearms and firearm safety in our city. To everyone else, I wish you the most blessings of the linen season that's now upon us, the fasting season, as we get ready for the resurrection of, of most of us that are Christians and have Christian belief in Easter. So as we go through Ash Wednesday, I wish all of you the best. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank you, Councilman Carroll. Vice President Gregory, District Seven.
Thank you, Mr. President. I join my colleagues in thanking all of our public safety and public works employees for the tremendous job that you did again this year. You know, driving down to Government Plaza this morning from West Mobile, it is always amazing to see how clean the streets already are. The employees were out this morning gathering up the barricades, and again, it is just amazing. We really do set the standard on cleaning up and handling the Mardi Gras crowns and the parade. So tremendous job, thank you, thank you to everyone who has been involved. Speaking of Mardi Gras, if you haven't had enough, once you finish the Trinity Gardens Parade, come on across town to Mobile Terrace. We will have the motorcade, the annual motorcade, winding its way through Mobile Terrace, will be in the city float again, lots of different entries, a lot of children throwing, again, beads, moon pies, stuffed animals, you name it. Come on over and have a great time, a big day of more Mardi Gras after Fat Tuesday in both Trinity Gardens and Mobile Terrace. I will be there, and I look forward to seeing everyone. Thank you.
You going to throw me something?
You bet.
Okay.
Come ride with me.
And I'd like to piggyback behind all my colleagues, thank the Public Safety and also Public Works for all the great work that they have done throughout the Mardi Gras season. They have participated in many events over the past weekend, represented as the council member and president of the council, and represented the city at different events. It was a deed, an honor, and a privilege to, to do those things this past week. And also, next week, District Three, I will be announcing a series of meetings, just keep your ears open for those meeting dates. Anything from the administration?
Motion to adjourn.
President.
Madam clerk.
One thing, I would just like to say on behalf of the council and myself, I would like to thank my staff in the city clerk's office and city council's office, the staff that helped us with public, from public buildings and architectural engineering, and the Mobile Police Department, were putting together a great ride for the Mobile City Council members, this Mardi Gras.
All right, thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Proffered to move in second in discussion. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? This means adjourn.